Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we convene our meeting, we have a few presentations of honorary resolutions. We are pleased to welcome guests to this space to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. First, we will start with a resolution recognizing farmers markets. We will be presented by Councilmember Jenkins.
Good morning, everyone. How are folks doing? I think we have a group here that is going to accept this award because they've been doing farmers markets all around the city. And we love our farmers markets. It's a great time of year in Minnesota to check out the harvest and the bounty of all of our local farmers. So, is this on?
It is.
Okay. The resolution recognizing August 4th through the 10th, 2024, as Farmers Market Week in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas, farmers markets serve as important sources of healthy food for residents, economic development mechanisms for local farmers and food producers, and vital community gathering spaces in Minneapolis. And whereas the city of Minneapolis launched the Homegrown Minneapolis Initiative in 2008 -- wow, that was a long time ago -- to expand the community's ability to grow, process, distribute, eat, and compost more healthy, sustainable, and locally grown food. And whereas, there are 16 farmers markets and mini-markets operating throughout the city in 2024. And since 2017, all of the farmers markets operating in Minneapolis are invited to participate in the Farmers Markets of Minneapolis Collaborative, staffed by Homegrown Minneapolis to promote and gather insights about the markets and partnership with the city of Minneapolis, the University of Minnesota, and many other market supporters. And whereas, Farmers Markets of Minneapolis Collaborative website at www.farmersmarketsofminneapolis.org has an online interactive map that makes it easy to find farmers markets all over the city. And whereas, the Farmers Markets of Minneapolis Collaborative supports an important economic engine for the local and regional community, providing economic opportunities for local farmers and food producers. And whereas, farmers markets in Minneapolis collectively supported 15 million in vendor sales in 2022, engaged more than 500 vendors in 2023, and welcomed to estimated 1.3 million annual visitors to the markets in Minneapolis in 2023. And whereas, most of the markets operate healthy food access programs, including Market Bucks and Farmers Markets Nutrition Program, also known as FMNP, and 66% of market vendors donated leftover produce to hunger relief programs in 2023. And whereas, customers at farmers markets in Minneapolis redeemed more than $345,000 in Market Bucks and SNAP EBT benefits in 2023, expanding access to fresh, healthy food for Minneapolis residents experiencing food insecurity. And whereas, August 4th through 10th, 2024, is the 25th National Farmers Market Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize August 4th through the 10th, 2024, as Farmers Market Week in the city of Minneapolis. Yay. Congratulations. And I wonder if anyone would like to share a few words? I know that a lot of the farmers markets, or at least some, use city lots as a venue to sell their wares, and a lot of local farmers also use city lots to grow their food, so.
Hi, I'm Allison Bab. I'm the manager of the Homegrown Minneapolis Initiative, and we're so pleased to have this resolution from council and mayor supporting our farmers markets. There really are amazing resources. So in addition to providing wonderful food access for low-income residents and really across the region, residents come into the city of Minneapolis to visit our farmers markets. They also are economic drivers, so they bring a lot of resources into the city and give opportunities to farmers to sell their various products. And also, of course, restaurants sometimes get their start at farmers markets. So it's really an incredible opportunity. We're very excited to partner with our many farmers markets across the city and encourage residents to support their market during not only Farmers Market Week, but the whole season. Many of them have winter markets as well, so something to keep in mind. Yeah, and thank you for your support today, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. And anybody else? Barbara, you want to say anything? Well, congratulations, and I will offer you this resolution as we stand for a group photo.
Next, we will be recognizing Black and POC LGBTQ+ Pride, also presented by Councilmember Jenkins and Councilmember Chavez.
Get used to me, guys. I'm gonna be up here for a little while. Welcome, Councilmember Chavez, and welcome, Minnesota POC Pride. You know, once again, I am so proud to be able to present this resolution honoring Black and POC LGBTQ+ Pride and the 10th anniversary of the Minnesota People of Color Pride Organization. You know, it's been POC Pride for the last 10 years, but prior to that, it was Black Pride. Before that, we would just have a picnic in the park because we were Black and queer and needed a space to be our own true selves, right? And that's something that not always available to us at the broader Pride, and certainly not available to us in the broader community. And so it is important that we create these spaces where people of color, and particularly Black folks, can get together and celebrate and love and spread joy with each other. So, without further ado, I will read this resolution honoring Black and POC LGBTQ+ Pride and the 10th anniversary of the Minnesota People of Color Organization 2024. Whereas, the first public display of Pride was formed by Black and Latinx trans women of color out of protests of police brutality and discrimination, also known as Stonewall, for those who you guys don't know. Whereas, this year, 2024, marked the 52nd year of the Pride March in the Twin Cities and the first Pride March -- with the first Pride March in 1972 marking the anniversary of New York Stonewall uprising. And whereas, the Twin Cities Pride Festival historically lacked the inclusion of Black LGBTQ+ people, Black Pride in 1999 was formed to make sure all cultures were included. Furthermore, the erasure of Black and Latinx and Indigenous transgender women in particular led to an important movement known as the Power to the People stage in Loring Park as a response to discrimination. That's pretty much the only place I go at Pride now.
Whereas, Black Pride, as well as the Power to the People stage, became beacons in the park with the movement expanding into a People of Color LGBTQIA+ Pride organization, a nonprofit organization celebrating and uniting LGBTQ+ people of color with a focus on equity assurance, racial justice, and economic opportunity for community members. The stage has brought talented artists such as Chastity Brown, Liz Zohr, Frenchie, and many more gifted local artists and activists. And whereas, since 2014, the People of Color LGBTQ+ Pride organizations has connected and served LGBTQ+ people of color statewide through HIV health advocacy, furthering its civic engagement work and the constant fight for equity and equality for LGBTQ+ people of color, and producing the annual Twin Cities Black Pride Festival. Whereas, the organization works diligently to address issues of race, culture, class, political, and sexual health in order to successfully achieve positive change in education, employment, social-emotional learning, and the overall quality of life for our community members. And whereas, POC Pride is both "and," it is advocacy and direct action towards greater equity and racial justice for Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and LGBTQ+ people of color, and a celebration of culture, dance, performance, glitter -- yes -- and ingenuity.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate Black Pride and the Minnesota People of Color Pride Organization and their respective outstanding leaders for their role and continued advocacy for racial justice for LGBTQIA+ communities across the state and mark the 10th anniversary of the Twin Cities People of Color Pride Organization. And the 2024 Back to Black Festival held Thursday, August 15th through Sunday, August 18th, 2024. Congratulations, Minnesota POC Pride. I'm just so honored to know all of you people. Would anybody like to share some words? Sanderson, the founder of Black Pride and POC Pride.
You know, me and you go back for 30 years in doing this, and you're very instrumental. We age ourselves, but you're very instrumental in making sure this happens every year. So I really do appreciate you helping us out every year in doing this for us also. You know, this is a milestone for every year to do this for us. So thank you very much. Hey, the city council.
Just really a lot of appreciation for you, Councilmember Jenkins and Chavez, for leading us in this, and thank you for the recognition of the Power to the People stage. I really, really appreciate that.
The best part of Pride.
We'll take a quick photo, and then we'll move on.
Congratulations. Love you all. Thank you so much, and looking forward to a great celebration. I think we have one more resolution that I am presenting along with --
Me.
-- I mean, Council President Payne.
Yes. Next, I'll be joining Councilmember Jenkins to recognize the legacy of Margo Endike Cross. Recognizing the life and legacy of Margo Endike Cross. Whereas, Margo Endike Cross, a longtime and successful disability rights and justice advocate, sadly passed away recently. And whereas, Margo Endike Cross served on various city commissions and committees such as the Civil Rights Commission for 11 years and the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities for over two decades. And whereas, Margo Endike Cross was a staunch advocate for the rights of people with disabilities and worked for over three decades at the Minnesota Council on Disability, providing accessibility support to businesses across the city. And?
And whereas, Margo Endike Cross provided technical assistance on several key projects in Minneapolis, including the Target Center renovations, Target Field, and US Bank Stadium, and elsewhere, including Alliance Field, CHS Field, and the new Senate Office Building, and the state Capitol renovations. And whereas, Margo Endike Cross exhibited an endless capacity to lead, educate, and support others with disabilities and those who were advocates in making the city a more welcoming and inclusive place for all to benefit from.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby honor the life and legacy of Margo Endike Cross for her decades of disability rights and justice advocacy with the city of Minneapolis, impacting the accessibility of the city buildings, programs, and services for the next generation to benefit from. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nick Mill. I'm the deputy director for our Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. I just wanted to start off today by saying thank you to our city leadership for this resolution, and I just want to say on behalf of the city, thank you to Margo for making us a more welcoming and inclusive city overall, and for the state as well. Personally, Margo was a great teacher. She was one to actually lead you along to help you complete the test, but also scold you you got that answer wrong. There were a number of times where I've seen planners, architects, and developers stumped by codes, measurements, and whatnot, but what she did really well was helping them understand how to best create the space for everyone, not only folks with mobility devices, folks with service dogs, folks with different cognitive abilities. She truly believed that this space is for everyone. So I am very fortunate to have worked with her, and I just want to pass it off to Joan Wilshire.
Hi. Yes, my name is Joan Wilshire, a long-term member of the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities. And Margo and I served on that committee basically since 1990, working together. Definitely, her area of expertise was accessibility, and so we worked on many issues with the city here, from making sure the city hall is accessible, but many of the new restaurants that were coming in town and venues such as that, the Hilton Hotel, and then the renovation of our state theater and Orpheum Theaters. So, and the main thing to remember when you're thinking of Margo, we spent so much of our time in the bathrooms, both men and women bathrooms. I'll never forget that, that we were in the bathrooms, in the toilet, all the time. So that's the one thing. And Margo, we worked together at the state because I was executive director of the Minnesota State Council on Disability for 15 years, so she was one of my staff as a state accessibility specialist. And one of the most favorite sayings I would have in the office when talking to state agencies or other entities is when they would argue, oh, do we have to do this, blah, 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 and I'd say, don't make me send Margo, because she was an enforcer. She's a force we reckon with, and she's going to be truly missed. So next time you're in a bathroom that's accessible, think of Margo.
Yeah, I do want to just say thank you to Margo for her legacy. We communicated quite a bit during a time when the city council was discussing drive-throughs, and she would remind me that drive-through is an accessibility issue for folks living with disabilities of all types. People still have access to food through moving through drive-throughs. So we still have a lot of work to do here at the city of Minneapolis and other public spaces to improve accessibility, but Margo Endike Cross was a staunch advocate and inspiration, hopefully, to us all. Thank you.
Finally, we will welcome up Councilmember Chowdhury to recognize Peppers and Fries.
All right. This resolution is recognizing and honoring Peppers and Fries for their contribution to the Greater Longfellow Neighborhood and the city of Minneapolis. Whereas, Peppers and Fries, a much-loved restaurant in the Cooper neighborhood of Ward 12 on Lake Street, has served our community since its opening in 2015. And whereas, Peppers and Fries was established by Steve and Marie Frias, an incredibly dynamic father-daughter duo who made high-quality food from scratch, the cornerstone of their business. And whereas, the Peppers and Fries menu is an innovative collision of burgers and burritos which have excited the taste buds of neighbors and foodies alike. And whereas, Peppers and Fries' commitment to our community extended to hosting events, being a vibrant social hub, and creating an ideal ambiance to enjoy baseball, a burger, and a beer. And whereas, Peppers and Fries has earned much acclaim, winning the Star Tribune Reader's Choice Award for Minnesota's Best Food Truck. And whereas, the PB and J and Bangkok Burgers both have won the Twin Cities Burger Battle, and the Peppers Juicy Burger has been awarded Bon Appetit Eater and Thrillist Top Twin Cities Juicy. And whereas, while the doors of the brick-and-mortar location might be closed, Peppers and Fries will continue their connection to our community with their food truck, bringing the joys of their culinary selections to various events and locations. And whereas, and we pass down here.
Steve Frias is ready for semi-retirement, and Marie Frias is on her journey back to normal life.
Whereas, the hard work, dedication, commitment, passion, and perseverance of Steve and Marie Frias have made Peppers and Fries an iconic part of Ward 12, contributing to the culture and culinary richness of Minneapolis. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis wishes to recognize and honor Peppers and Fries for their lasting impact on the Eastlake Street Corridor community and beyond.
Now, therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and city council do hereby present this resolution as an expression of gratitude and appreciation to honor and recognize Peppers and Fries and its founders, Steve and Marie Frias, for their outstanding contribution to the Greater Longfellow Neighborhood and the whole of Minneapolis. I'm gonna hand you this while I say a couple words, and then I'm gonna maybe pass it to you. You want to hold this for a second, Steve? That's for you. So, I just want to say to both of you, Steve and Marie, Lorraine, Megan, the whole Peppers and Fries crew, just thank you so much for your commitment to the South Side community and Minneapolis as a whole and the metro. I know many people across the state of Minnesota have come to Peppers and Fries to enjoy your location, and we're just so lucky that you both just put so much heart and soul into our community, into your business, especially during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. You've been really flexible in making that possible, and I know that you literally gave the keys back yesterday, and you're finally now starting to step into normal life, and you're going into your semi-retirement. And we'll miss you, but we are, we just, as a community, want to say that we are so grateful for you, we are so proud of you, and we just wish you so much luck in the next chapter of your life, and we're all gonna be looking out for the food truck so we can grab some of the best burgers in town. So just thank you so much. We really appreciate you, and it's just incredible that we get to honor you and your family today here at city hall. It's the least that we can do for the years of investment you've given to our city. Yeah. Would either of you like to say some words?
First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for nominating us. It's a very, very -- we'd love this neighborhood. I'm very proud. Really quick, 10 years ago, my wife says, I want to open a restaurant, I had a dream. And my wife goes, I got an area that's up and coming, it's really brewing, we should go. And she said, let's go to the -- it's called Longfellow Area. And I said, is that St. Paul's east side? And we're from St. Paul. And she goes, no, it's right over the bridge. We went over, fell in love with it, decided to plan our dream there, and we grew with the community, and it was the best community. From all the schools, Minneapolis South, Minnehaha Academy, even down to Washburn, supported us. The St. Elbers Church, big, you know, we're all about community, and we were the participants The St. Elbers Church, big, you know, we're all about community, and we were the participate. And I was very happy. But I want you to know that this is not a goodbye. This is, we're a different chapter, and my food truck is going to be going around the neighborhood, and I'll be at Wouldn Ship Friday. So, okay? Thank you very much. Marie and I, and Lorraine, my wife, thank you for this so much.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything? Okay.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the city council for August 1st to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
And Councilmember Osmond.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vito.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman is absent. Councilmember Wonsley is absent. Vice President Chugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? And I'll also recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Cashman. Seeing no one in queue, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is acceptance of the minutes from our regular meeting on July 18th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its vice chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 27 items for approval today, so please bear with me. The first three are donations for travel for city staff. Item number one is passage of resolution from the National Association of County and City Health Officials for travel and lodging expenses. Item number two is gift acceptance from the Big Cities Health Coalition of Regular Membership Dues, Travel, Lodging, and Appropriate Incendials. Item number three is gift acceptance from Carbon Neutral Cities Alliance for travel, lodging, and appropriate incidentals. The next six are all bids for basic things that we do as a municipality. Item number four accepts the bid for Fire Station 8 casework improvements. Number five is a bid for second precinct improvements. Item number six is a bid for Hawthorne Ramp Elevator Modernization Projects. Item number seven is a bid for Hennepin-Dunwoody Bike Way Project. Item number eight is for the First Avenue South Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project. Item number nine is for lead service line replacements for year one. Item number 10 authorizes contracts with five specific vendors for the U.S. Department of Agricultural Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant for tree outreach. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Carlson Printing Company for stock envelopes and letterhead. Item number four is a contract amendment with Versicon for the Convention Center Meeting Room 103 renovation project. Item number 13 authorizes the contract amendment with BRI Parent for benefits billing and Affordable Care Act compliance, also for COBRA management. Item number 14 authorizes a contract amendment for a new contract with trustees of the Hamline University of Minnesota for the Adopt a Drain program. Item number 15 authorizes a contract amendment for the City Hall Restack Phase 3B Room 51 project. Item number 16 is a contract amendment with Vinco for catch basin and manhole repairs. Item number 17 is a legal claim, a settlement of the city of Minneapolis's construction delay claims against Excel Energy. Items number 18 through 27 are all legal settlements related to workers' compensation claims. Item number 18 is a legal settlement, workers' compensation claim of Michael Sandin. Item number 19 is the claim of Daniel Pamarenki. Item number 20 is the claim of George Pelts. Item 21 is the worker compensation claim of Ann Morsec. Item number 22 is a worker's compensation claim of Mark Madich. Item number 23 is the worker's compensation claim of Marcus Luke. Item 24 is a compensation claim of Scott Downing. 25 is the compensation claim of Wesley Brown. 26 is the compensation claim of Craig Brown. And item number 27 is the compensation claim of James Roger. I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I'd just like to pull out items 18 through 26 for a separate vote. I don't need it for discussion. I just want to make it easier for the clerks to track my no vote.
Councilmember Chavez has asked to separate items numbers 18 through 26?
Correct.
Or 27?
No, just through 26.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the remainder of those items? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the report minus items 18 through 26.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up items 18 through 26. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and two nays.
That carries, and the full report is adopted. The next report is from our Budget Committee, and that report will be presented by that committee's vice chair, Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee is bringing forward four items for approval today. Item number one is the passage of ordinance adopting findings approving the establishment and salary schedule for the appointed position in the Health Department of Deputy Commissioner Public Health Initiatives and Operations. Item number two is passage of ordinance adopting findings approving the establishment and salary schedule for the appointed position in the Civil Rights Department of Director Police Conduct Review. Item number three is passage of resolution amending the 2024 General Appropriation Resolution, designating funds within the Neighborhood Safety Department's budget for 2024 Violence Prevention Strategies. And item number four is accepting the second low bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Meeting Room remodel Phase 2 of Shihei Construction Company. I will move the committee's report.
Vice President Chugtai has moved approval of the Budget Committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to speak briefly on item number four. I'm grateful to see the convention center remodel before us today. Thank you in part to Councilmember Cashman for her efforts on that, and I'm eager to get this passed. But what happened here shouldn't go unnoticed. This item happened to come before this body at the same time as the public safety aid reallocation proposal, and it is completely unrelated to the funding of the police contract. Rather than voting on this entirely separate item, it was held hostage, really, and used as a bargaining chip by a majority of my colleagues. At the last council meeting, some of you even went so far as to say your vote in support of this convention center project remodel hinged on the passage of an amended funding proposal. So I needed to point out that I don't think that's the kind of precedent that we want to set as a body, tying together two unrelated items essentially demanding a quid pro quo is certainly not the way I'll be making decisions and taking votes here. We have to do better than that, and our city's financial stability is at risk if we don't. This remodel is not a greeting card for members of the building trades. It's not a resolution of support. It is a $12 million project that creates the very jobs that our labor partners and union members rely on to make a living. Thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you so much, President Payne. I also just wanted to take a second to thank Councilmember Cashman for the big lift that she did in ensuring members quickly had the opportunity to understand what this remodel was about. The RCA in and of itself was extremely vague and lacked detail that did not give us the information necessary to understand why a $13 million investment was warranted, and so that additional step was super helpful. I also want to give many thanks to Council Vice President Chugtai for her work in figuring out a budget solution so we can ensure that we kept this convention center remodel proposal whole and were able to pay for one of the highest raises that we've ever seen for our police department with multimillion-dollar impact on our tax levy in a way that residents didn't have to take it on. And I'll just note, I felt like the steps and the actions that took place here were put in a situation where we were looking at public safety aid that was allocated to neighborhood safety programs that are much, much needed, much underfunded in general neighborhood safety in terms of programming in contest with the police contract. And that was something that came before us without much conversation with the administration, and we had to look at where available funds were to make decisions as we're facing budget constraints. And I thought we made the right decision in looking at where available funds were, and this remodel didn't seem like the biggest priority in comparison to public safety. And we had a really good discussion. We were able to find out a solution where everything was able to work, and I just wanted to note that for the public and extend gratitude to the members who worked really hard to make that possible. I don't think we should have been put in a situation where we had to come up with a solution so fast after we had spent last year's budget cycle allocating public safety aid funds, but we were able to solve that. And I look forward to us pushing forward on public safety programming alternatives that can work in tandem to ensure comprehensive safety for all, because we definitely need it in the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury. I added myself to queue just to, well, first of all, thank Councilmember Cashman for her leadership. She really brought us all together to make sure that this project was successful in moving forward. But secondly, I just wanted to speak to our role, especially under the new structure of the Legislative Council Executive Mayor. There might be some things that feel unprecedented, but this is absolutely within our purview. This is exactly what we are supposed to be doing. We should be using our responsibility as fiscal agents to scrutinize every single dollar that moves through this institution. And it is absolutely appropriate to look at every one of those investments and weigh the priorities of those. And I think that what we did through these actions was recognize this need to move the police contract forward and be responsible in figuring out ways to pay for it. And so we should be seeing a lot more of those types of deliberations and trade-offs as we go into the budget season this year. And, you know, going forward, this institution has created a little bit more clarity about where we should be weighing in, and I think this is absolutely one of those appropriate places for us to weigh in. So not seeing anyone else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we will have the report from our Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee, which will be given by that committee's vice chair, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Business and Housing and Zoning Committee is bringing forward 10 items for approval and withdrawing one item. Item number one is approving an on-sale liquor and general entertainment license with Sunday sales and 2:00 AM license for Ava. Item number two is approving an interim use permit for minor auto repair at 3452 Lindell Avenue South. Item number three is withdrawing a variance and site plan review appeal at the request of the applicant. Item number four is the liquor license approvals. Number five is the 24-hour license renewals, sorry, is 24 liquor license renewals. Item number six is 34 gambling license renewals. And item number seven is approving a business license operating conditions for Mrs. Dessert and Campire. Item number eight is approving a restaurant and catering license with business license operating conditions for Ryan Food Emporium. Item number nine is approving a housing first and homelessness prevention strategy staff direction. Item number 10 is approving a legislative directive related to TNC license fees. And item number 11 is a rezoning and alley vacation for Neon at West Broadway and 23rd Avenue North. And I'll move approval of all these items, with the exception of item number three, with which I will move to withdraw.
Councilmember Ellison has moved approval of the committee's report with the withdrawal of item number three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
President Payne.
Oh.
Uh, Councilmember Jenkins.
Oh. Councilmember Jenkins.
Sorry. Thank you, Councilmember, Council President Payne. I did just want to note that the Alightness Project, and I spoke on this earlier, but it really is a big deal that they have stepped up to fill the need for the LGBT community in their health pursuits. And, you know, Alightness Project is located in Ward 8, and they've been doing an amazing job at helping folks find housing and housing opportunities. And so I just wanted to shout them out for being willing to take up the mantle and pick up those extra clients that Rainbow Health is no longer able to service. And I'm just really proud and grateful for them for doing that work. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just add, I think, for, because of the timing of that issue, it's on the COW agenda, but it is the type of thing that would typically be on the biz agenda, so. Thank you. Councilmember Ellison. All right. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward nine items. Item number one is amending a previous council action to correct the seat number for a Community Environmental Advisory Commission appointment. Item number two is approving the concept layout for the Cedar Lake Road Bridge Project. Item number three is authorizing a cooperative agreement between Hennepin County Regional Railroad Authority for the replacement of the First Avenue South Bridge. Item four is approving implementation of Phase One of the Critical Parking Areas Modernization for areas 1, 2, 6, 7, and 9. Item number five is authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a State Two Smart Grant. Item number six is authorizing the submittal of a grant application for the 2024 Safe Streets For All Program. Item number seven is designating the construction of a pedestrian crossing flasher at 715 24th Street East. Item number eight is approving a staff directive requesting a nationwide landscape analysis of zero-waste programming. And item number nine is approving a legislative directive to provide updates on the zero-waste programming since the adoption of the Zero Waste Plan in 2017 and the Climate Equity Plan in 2023. I'll move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison. Is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Committee of the Hall, which will be presented by that committee's vice chair, Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Hall is bringing forward three items. Number one is 2023 Housing Opportunities for Persons with HIV/AIDS Contract. Number two is Aroma Week Honorary Resolution. And number three is Dr. Ali Shavo Honorary Resolution. I'll move all three of these items for approval.
Councilmember Chowdhury has moved approval of the committee's report, also noting this was the item Councilmember Jenkins was referencing. Is there any discussion, Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes, I just want to announce that Aliveness Project is doing a great job. Thank you, sir.
We are grateful to the Aliveness Project for stepping in. And seeing no other discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The final report will be offered by our Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, which is also Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward three items. Item number one is authorizing the execution of an MOU between the City of Minneapolis and the Minneapolis Park and Recreational Board for private property tree removal. Item number two is authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for corrective lead-based paint hazard activities. And item number three is approving a legislative directive to receive an update on actions related to recommendations from the Minneapolis Safe and Thriving Communities Report. With that said, I'll move approval of all these items, Mr. President.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. That completes the reports of all of our standing committees. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. First, pursuant to notice, Councilmembers Ellison and Vitah move to introduce and give first reading to an ordinance amending the Streets and Sidewalks Code, amending the Sunset Provision to extend the expiration date of the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District. Because of the statutory requirements related to this ordinance amendment, I will move that we refer this matter to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee and schedule a public hearing to be held at that body's regular committee meeting on August 22 at 1:30 PM. Second, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Chowdhury, and I move to introduce and give first reading to an ordinance amending the Housing Maintenance Code to amend the required pre eviction filing notice to residential tenants to be referred to the Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee. Is there any discussion on these introductions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those matters are referred as listed on the agenda. The next order of business is resolutions. As shown on the agenda, we have four honorary resolutions today. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers on those resolutions? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I just want to thank Councilmember Jenkins for authoring the Farmer's Market Week Honorary Resolution and for the staff who came up today and really spoke about the progress of Homegrown Minneapolis since founding in 2008. We do have some really special community gardens in Ward Seven, including one in my neighborhood, the LaSalle Community Garden, which did have a small fire earlier this week, but all of our plots are successful and still growing. And there's another really special community garden in the downtown west neighborhood, which is in a food desert. And the gardeners there, including the lead gardener, who is a horticulturist, Myron Thornberry, produces thousands of pounds of food every year that he donates to a local food shelf right on the border of Ward Seven and Ward Six. So I just want to acknowledge how special these places are and thank Homegrown Minneapolis for their support for these initiatives in my community.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for supporting the multiple resolutions that I brought forward today. But most importantly, the Black and POC Pride Honorary Resolution, as well as the resolution honoring Margot M. Dickey Cross for her advocacy for disability rights. These are two issues that are deeply a part of my life, and so I just wanted to say thank you to you all for supporting those resolutions today.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Yes, I had to step out for a second to take a phone call. Could I, I wanted to be recognized as voting for any of the committee reports in the affirmative that I missed while I had to step out.
If there's no objection, okay. Councilmember, no, not Councilmember Chowdhury. May I have a motion to adopt those honorary resolutions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the resolutions are adopted. We'll now move to new business, the new business portion of our agenda. We have one item under new business today, which is Mayor Frye's nomination of Candace Falk and William Walker Jr. for two seats on the city's Civil Service Commission. I'll move to refer those nominations to the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee for the setting of a public hearing. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those nominations are referred to the AEO Committee for the setting of a public hearing. We have a request for a closed session today, so before we recess for that closed session, I'll ask if there are any announcements from councilmembers. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say this. Jack Newton, a great mentor of mine, passed away this summer, and I regret only finding out about it at the grocery store last week. He's the one, he is one who encouraged me to run for this role on city council. And perhaps the most pointed part of a much longer story was him literally poking me directly in the chest with his cane about it once upon a time. Jack was known as being thoughtful, very smart, and always finding a way to get his point across. I was Jack's successor originally on the Linden Hills Neighborhood Council many years ago. And what I knew and I admired about him was he led the Neighborhood Council not only to make sure that sidewalks were contiguous and that an old trolley right-of-way became a useful public space, but he notably championed a public housing project right across the street from his own home. He built incredible support for that broadly in our community. Jack Newton was a father, a spouse, a teacher, graduate of Minneapolis West High School, and taught at Roosevelt for many years. He was an Army veteran, an activist, and an inspiration to everybody that knew him. Jack Newton was also a former Minneapolis City Council Olderman, serving one term in 1965. He started a Buy a Pothole campaign that found its way to street repair improvements. And while I'm still trying to figure out how we continue to do that better here many years later, I think what I was always most touched by was his relationship with his loving spouse, Marge, who survives him. He and Marge lived a life of adventure, whether it was working together at Yellowstone National Park in the summers, having the joy of raising many children together and enjoying their grandchildren in what I saw to be simple ways. And maybe Jack more in a supportive role in Marge's massive gardening adventures, public park improvements, farming plot initiatives, all from their townhome in Linden Hills neighborhood. Jack wasn't just his family's biggest champion. He and Marge weren't only one of my biggest champions, but Jack and Marge were some of our city's strongest supporters, and they were very dedicated to their public servant civic roles. So I wanted to mention and honor the life of Jack Newton here and his legacy before you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to shout out Nakomis Days. That's taking place the first weekend of August. I believe it takes place in my ward and Councilmember Kosky's ward. This is a beloved Nakomis East tradition. We'll be celebrating the local businesses in the area. There'll be food, parking lot parties, chances to win prizes, music. And it's just a really great way for our community to come together in the summer. You can learn more about Nakomis Days at nakomiseastba.com and take a look at the whole schedule of events from Friday, August 2 to Sunday, August 4. Just wanted to shout that out.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you.
I too want to make an announcement about the continuation of the Summer of Fun in Minneapolis. So this weekend in the Third Ward at Boom Island Park, one of the jewels of the park system, will be the Basilica Block Party. So that starts tomorrow night. I'm going to turn my phone off, so I know all of you like to call me so much and communicate with me, but you won't be able to do it this weekend, so I'll be enjoying myself. And then I also want to announce yet another James Beard Award nominee restaurant opening up in the Third Ward. So Yevang recently opened up his restaurant, which is right on the corner of 13th and Second Street, and I encourage all of you to come down and have a wonderful meal. Thank you.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, President Payne. It is a busy weekend in Minneapolis. I will add on to a few of the events happening. So a lot of us are and know about the Uptown Art Fair, but it is taking a detour this year. And because of construction, Bachmann's on Lyndale Avenue, which is in my ward but borders Councilmember Palmasano's in Ward 13, they are taking it on this year, and it's really exciting. So they have opened their arms, and I'm excited for this opportunity for them to support the community in this way. So that is Saturday and Sunday. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, we've completed all of the items on our agenda and will now consider the request for a closed session, which is to receive a briefing on the litigation matter of Desmond Gilbert v. City of Minneapolis. Before I move to close the meeting, I'll recognize the city attorney to provide the legal basis for the requested closed session.
Thank you, Council President Payne, councilmembers. The next item on the agenda is the case of Desmond Gilbert versus City of Minneapolis at All, United States District Court, District of Minnesota Court File Number 21-CV-02350. Your lawyers wish to provide the council a briefing on this case, which is in active litigation in federal court. Accordingly, under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05/3B, the council may upon a proper motion close the meeting for the purposes of attorney-client communication as permitted by the attorney-client privilege. In considering the motion, the council should weigh the right of the public to know what its government is doing against the need of the city to preserve the confidentiality of its discussions with its attorneys.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I move to close our public meeting as authorized under the Open Meeting Law, specifically Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05, for the purpose of receiving a briefing on the litigation matter of Desmond Gilbert versus City of Minneapolis. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries. For the viewing public, I will note that the broadcast of this meeting will continue, and the council will reconvene in public after we've concluded the closed session.